We only have three or four roads left to do and that will be done depending on weather and equipment, we'll get those completed in the next week or two. The paving program that Reese Wiley is performing with us, they're ninety-nine percent complete. They're almost done also.
There's some beautiful roads out there now. I appreciate very much.
On the one out there north of the floor, is that, what is that?
Well, it was pretty well the whole way across the county.
Yeah, it's a racetrack now.
I know.
It's smooth and they was, I'm like wow.
I was running that racetrack this morning coming over here and yeah, it was pretty full.
When we're done with chip and seal, we're gonna move over to adding shoulders to all the new paved roads.
All new what?
All new paved roads. So the nineteen and a half miles that we just paved this year, we'll add stone shoulders to those.
Add stone shoulders, right, go. And I noticed that Steve Racetrack does make stone shoulders. That, I spent a number of years teaching on the far end of the School of Carroll where Scott began his informal education. It has never been in the shape that it is now, coming all the way across there. It is very, very nice. We appreciate it. I'm sure everybody who's in that area, they're appreciative. Okay. When you're done, I've got a couple of things to ask you.
Okay. I'm done.
Okay. Are you still looking for a way to paint stripes?
I've got requests for quotes out right now, so they should be, I'll open those here at commission meeting October third.
Wonderful. I'm still getting harangued about that by people who live over there, so.
I added to the last year's list to, I added to the list I had last year that I was getting the quotes for. And I've already got at least one quote in, so.
Why was I going to go with the hands of paint myself starting there?
Is it just for the striking?
Yes. My signs that I need off of nine fifty that says private drive like that that I asked you about that our sign man took down, did you ever find where they went here where those signs went to?
Um, yes, we've got one, he put one back up.
Okay.
And there was a second one on Pirate Creek Road that said next left is that building, so I had it posted sign at the building itself.
Okay.
And then there was a dead end sign that he moved. I'm not sure what other sign was, was on that street.
I don't know where it was.
Yeah.
I just had the lady complaining to me, well, I have two ladies.
Did she tell you what the sign said?
Huh?
Did she tell you what the sign said?
She did, but I don't remember, so. My fault that I don't remember exactly what it said. I know two ladies that live back there, took me down there and said we need our sign back, so.
Oh, they've got the street name sign. That's up.
Okay, so we need one that just says no outlet or something for that, or private drive.
Well, we have one, before you go down to that area, there's a, there's a no outlet sign.
Okay.
Okay, I don't understand that. No outlet down there.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Well, we can have to drive down.
I called and asked you about this TAM, the Transport Asset Management Plan.
Yes.
And I've gotta turn this in by the end of the month and I could not find a copy or that we have one and evidently they do not have one either down here at the expense. So, hi.
Well, it's filed with LTAP, so I need a copy of it.
That's what I need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Highway Department? Okay, I want to begin to apologize, I was dismissed at the start of this meeting because I was too late. Kind of befuddled by it. We lost a good friend of the Highway Department recently, someone named Bill Harmon, who's been over thirty years in our Highway Department, passed away, I went to his funeral two days ago. Yeah. And so if you would bear with me, I would like to, in his honor, I mean, he was a terrific guy, did a terrific job in the Highway Department. I have about a thirty-second pause here, just pages off. Bill was a great guy, you will be missed. Kristen Long, uh, get Kristen.
I'm taking a look for hers.
You're Kristen Day, okay.
Yeah, she messaged me this morning and she still has some elements that she's done. Time for the contract with Waste Management again and we had a brief conversation with her, it's only going up four, four percent or something like that, helps her explain it to me and she highly recommended that we go ahead and continue with them. And so we just need to look along, do we wanna stay with Waste Management or do we wanna move on? Did, did you get a chance to see this?
I didn't, but it's same as.
Same as before, yeah.
Or is it?
Do you want to say over the top?
I love it out. Go ahead.
But yeah, I mean, she, she highly recommended that we stay with Waste Management. She was surprised it didn't go up as more than what it has because of fuel costs and stuff like that, but Waste Management, her management, everybody but the little guys.
We're giving them a low price. The number one bidder we had against them last time was Flint County Disposal and they've now bought out Flint County Disposal, so what's your opinion on it?
This is gonna take a. Yeah, it was from, that one, one point three, twelve thirty-one. But we got, there's a timeframe once too, and I was gonna have a contract.
Yes.
So if, I'm reading this part, I was like eighty-three, fifty-eight disposal wrapper container usage, which is not too shabby.
I don't see it yet. That you need to give those kids so that when starting, they can.
To me, our main thing is we must, we're not large enough to really hit bids from other large companies, so what we have to do is get a set price for them and then determine if our prices can cover, we raise the price or not. But no, we're not gonna lower prices.
Right. I think what we're saying, still paying cents. And we still, I think she's about moving right now into that, right now.
She's doing pretty well, I mean, my great budget.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Last year she was pretty, so.
Right. I mean, the county has to do something for services, you can't really break you. I mean, that's my, but it's not, we're not paying, I think that one year when I was on council, it only cost the county twelve hundred dollars for a year.
Very good.
So, yeah, that's pretty good for, but you know, back in the day, everybody used, you know, churches moved up and stuff like that, way back before this went, you know, people were getting some free service and that's why it was costing us all that. Now everybody's accountable when they have to pay. So I'm going with that motion, endorse this contract.
I see a change that is, it says contact and that person's not, is no longer working here, hasn't for a couple of years, so I need to at least put that.
Where's that at?
Here on the contact where it says building information, that, that should just be my little, just the auditor's office, because people change all the time. That, two people since that person's here, should just say auditor's office.
Auditor, no. Who put that one?
So you made a, a motion to endorse this contract with the one change of the name.
Right.
Anything else?
No.
One second, so I got a motion, a second, then we're gonna endorse this contract with Waste Management. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed. You done with, you and Kristen?
Yes.
Okay. Eric Land, Director Cameron Yates, thank you for weighing on us, Cameron. Don't do that, you're walking like I walk. Good morning.
Good morning. I brought to you guys last month, mixed use proposal, you guys are gonna take it to review, so I put a hand out in your mail box, if you guys got those or not. Had Radnor, Oakley, Yeoman, every little town possible, just kind of the overlook of what business district lies within those smaller towns, which there really wasn't a whole lot that I wanted you guys to at least be able to see, so.
Did you give me one?
Huh? I should have been, I got three and then print five, I should have been all in my boxes. Then somebody has it back. But I know there's still a lot of those things I have to do. Several beacon prints is what it's, snaps.
I didn't put it in because I didn't know that you put them in your mailboxes.
So they're over here. So yeah, really it's as close as I could get to each town, like I said, Oakley, Cutler, every small town in Carroll County, it's not incorporated, that has some kind of, back in the day, had some sort of general business district. I know twenty nineteen, when I first heard, we had one in Oakley that spoke up last month that was still in the business district and they got a rezum. So, you know, it's not crucial in the smaller towns, it is incorporated towns, but it's still there and some of those people don't know that their house is zoned business until they go to sell it. So it, this would be another option for the county ordinance, doesn't have to be, take over any current zoning, just be another option to, we don't know what's gonna happen in twenty years, Cutler might be, it might start moving and take off, we just don't know. So it could be another option for the county and like I said last month, you got ninety days, so there's, there's nothing that's pressing to where we wanna shove it through without certainly, so.
So use your example there of one on, um, Cutler. This would also allow an expansion of the business district. Right. Or to come in and ask to be, is this a new title?
If you, if they added separate parcels within the business district and they, at that time, it's zoned, whatever it is, and we wanted to change it to mixed use certainly. You know, so the ones we have now, they're zoned, let's say Uptown, Cutler, you know, that's, they got the Blacksmith and things like that. Back in the day, they had several of them actually, there was a lot of business there. So they incorporated that into the zoning district because it was business, a lot of those businesses went away. And it's the same thing's happened in Burlington, Camden, you know, like I said last month, the businesses were supposed to come in the seventies, that's why they put it there, they just never happened and now they're coming there, which is again why the realtors are now.
It's primarily for the homeowner to make sure he can get, or it can be financed for a new purchaser.
Correct, because that's what we run into all over, not just Indiana, not just Carroll County, is these houses were zoned business back in whatever day the zoning ordinance was put in, the businesses never came. So we had the one in Burlington, it was sold three times prior to them finding out that their home was actually zoned in the business district. So the title companies do a lot of research now because of loan rates and how to find them, and they're finding them all over the place. So we had one in Burlington that cost them, you know, it cost them three sales because the bank said, we're not gonna give you two point eight percent when your home is zoned in the business district, it needs to be zoned residential. So what's there now is fine. In the future, if they wanna change it or towns wanna change it, that's, that's an option. But if it's an empty lot now and they wanted to change it to the mixed use, that's fine, the district that's there now is what's gonna stay current unless you guys choose to change whatever parcel that are zoned business now. So it's not something that's gonna just take place unless you guys choose to do so. Like Camden passed theirs last week or two weeks ago, now we're gonna go through, probably walk the entire area that's zoned business and then we'll go through that process and let the homeowners know, you know, what, what the survey says, it's all, it's in public, so. They'll choose, we won't. Area plan will not choose what parcel will be a rezum.
The area plan will not choose what parcels are gonna make?
No, they've incorporated city limits, that's.
Oh, we incorporated.
Yeah, within, within an area, so with you guys, for the, the county, if we adopt to this, we can have it as a, just another, it's another option. You can keep it as is now and then have that as another option as the mixed use, ten years from now, things start taking off in Cutler, we really need to get this changed. So it's another option for future use, it's another option for today, if there was several people that could not sell their homes, incorporated towns, they're gonna start doing it anyway, so.
In the past, you've come to us several times, I think, with this situation and we have changed, you voted on it, come to us, we change the zoning law.
Not, not for, not for any, in the, like, we had one for Burlington, we had one in Dolphie, we had one, so the, those go to the, the final approvals by the council.
Right.
Yeah, so we had the one for you guys that was an option.
Okay, so if you have another option, will the zoning board, the, the area plan board, will they be the ones who go through this and designate which ones are going to be?
Mentioned.
You'll have to bring it to us.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And it really doesn't affect properties that for some reason, when it was initially done into zoning, these were businesses, but they were put into residential, doesn't affect that? And I could, I could cite, for example, Cutler, several spots where there was a house there, but it was being used as a business.
Like a, a home, in-home occupation?
I guess you'd call it that, yeah. That when the zoning came in, they said, no, this is a residential. And it probably should have been a business spot.
Yeah, and so we have language in the zoning ordinance for home occupations, most of it's in the ag district, which we've had, those we have had several that were back in the day spot zoned.
Maybe that's a runner.
Yeah, we had one out there between Dolphie and Florida, it was out in the middle of nowhere. And it cost them a couple of sales because it's spot zoned, which is not something, it's not something that's, in today's day and age, it's not a good decision. You don't wanna have that ag district in the middle of just a little tiny piece of business because of what we run into that. Now those people have no idea unless the title company has done their homework that they're even zoned business. So spot zoning in today's world is frowned upon. We're finding some still, if you zone in on the map, you'll see a little speck of blue, that's not uncommon in every county, but that's more in the rural area for, they have a resale shop or, fix, you know, fix cars out of the garage. So for what you just mentioned, if there's language within that ordinance that says at home occupations, that's certainly something they can do if they meet the criteria, but that's usually in the ag district. Are they all over the county? They are, and they, there's some of them that's been there for several years.
The one I was thinking of had been funeral home and was changed, was, when zoning came in, it was made residential instead of continuing it as a funeral home, as a business.
Yeah, because resi, funeral homes are kind of in that, they're kind of both, because a lot of the funeral home directors live upstairs.
It was, it was that way.
Yeah, so that's probably why I, there's several of them like that. I don't know that a lot of them live upstairs anymore, but that one, David's.
We were doing that thing.
They were doing, yeah, they're still some, that's probably why it was on a residential.
Green, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you know, so.
Okay, so your question to us is, will, you need a motion that will say we allow.
To, adopt it to the current ordinance, so it's not taking place of anything, it's just an additional option. So it's not gonna take use of what's there now, it's not gonna say we're shoving this out the window, it's done, we're no longer gonna do that. It's another option for, if in the event something happens in Radnor, Oakley, those towns, then, you know, it's, it's part of the zoning ordinance, so.
Can you frame this motion for, motion to approve? Is there an ordinance to report that? I'm looking at two, two point two. I don't even remember.
I think it's a four.
Four?
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion to accept this.
To adopt.
To adopt.
Was it a four? Is that the one that Deb sent us?
That's the one that was there.
Whatever number she put on there.
She doesn't put this.
Those are yours?
We did, we did, yeah.
Okay, I think that was.
But it'll, we'll have to change it some stuff on that.
Okay. Well, so the, the process is after we adopted the area plan, there's ninety days for each entity to adopt it. So like Camden's already done theirs and now we'll start working on the other part of it. And then after the ninety days, if no one, so right now Camden, Burlington I haven't heard back from, if they wasn't to adopt it, their, their district would just pay us this, so like I said.
So this is just for Camden and Burlington, that's what it says?
No, 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 Camden, Burlington and Yeoman do their separate, this is for Carroll County. Yeah, we, we don't have control over the incorporated towns, you know, they all have their, every, after this was done, the next day I took each entity, that ordinance and say, you know, now you have ninety days to adopt it. So this one is for Carroll County, Carroll County's zoning ordinance is nineteen seven. Each entity has this separate, Camden has theirs, they voted on, Burlington has theirs, Yeoman has theirs, this one is for Carroll County, so.
And this is four? Point two two dash four?
Oh, four.
Oh, four.
Is there any public comment on this? Anybody wants to progress it?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty, twenty-two oh four.
Yeah, motion to second to adopt twenty, ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash oh four, ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of Carroll County, Indiana. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Those books that I gave you guys a couple of years ago, the new thick zoning books, so what I'm gonna do for that particular one, so it's Carroll County, it's got every, everything involved, I'll print those off and then we can just, since they're in those binders, we can just add it to, instead of printing all new binders, I think it's expensive. Yeah, so, okay?
And on the back here, it says commissioners here, you also have this line down here, what county voted.
Order this?
I didn't sign up for your, I signed it. You gotta do.
Oh. You didn't see the bottom? You didn't see the top?
I did see the top.
I think it's that too.
I, also, I appreciate the, among the sides for Mr. Harmon, we also lost a retired K-9 deputy, Spencer Kingres, K-9, over the weekend, so it'd be a nice.
I'm sorry.
Retired K-9, Graham, Carroll County.
Graham.
Yeah, so, yeah. I'm not sure if he knew about that, but he was a retired one, yeah, he was retired and he was a great asset to the sheriff's department, so.
He's been a lot of them.
Yeah, he's a, he's a good dog, so. And their employees, K-9s are employed, so. You want me to get that now or you just scan to sign?
I have to.
Okay, it's good. Okay, thank you.
I'll have to get a change later because I have to fix my sign.
See, I had an opportunity to watch that dog work a few times, he's a pretty enthusiastic feller. Was a male, wasn't it?
Yeah.
He's the one you just couldn't go up to and try to pet that.
Yes.
You don't put your hand through the window that dog. I learned that from Harmon. Well, there he, he was on nights together with her a little bit and, that dog, he stared me down like a little pork chop. I knew he just wanted to bite me.
He was teaching you a good lesson there.
Yeah, go go in the room and go out there.
Keep your hands back down. Okay, we are ready to move ahead to, I reviewed for the sheriff, the general agreement between Cass County and Carroll County regarding the housing inmates. It's in proper form, it has provisions for, you know, the amount, rate forty dollars a day, it's, it's a one-year automatically renewable document, it covers the period August one to December thirty-one. Regarding medical services, routine things that are normally provided by the, the jail there would be provided by them, anything else in the way of medical expenses for the inmates would be Carroll County's responsibility. The county's mutually released one, there's whole, whole harmless agreements mutual, in other words, Cass County holds harmless Carroll County for anything that happens while inmate was in their custody and we hold Cass County harmless from any responsibility that is Carroll County's under the agreement to provide. It can be terminated upon thirty days notice by either party, state the reason, but it, boy, they can just state the reason, it, it, it doesn't, it's not guaranteed to go beyond, and the Cass County is entitled to refuse and transport inmates if they make the decision they don't want a particular inmate, they, they can refuse that inmate. So these are all standard for this type of agreement and it looks, it's a, it's a pretty complicated.
We did have one in White County, didn't we?
Just now their sheriff elected not to pursue that, so.
So the, my understanding is that they need medical up there and we don't have to go up and get them anymore and bring them back here for our medical, they'll take it there and then bell us.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So it looks okay.
What, just to give you a brief history of what happened, this Cass County recently added a hundred and fifty beds to their deal, they already had two hundred and sixteen and they added a hundred and fifty beds, so that addition is up and operating now. So they are, we're not the only county that they've extended this to, Howard and Miami County are also involved.
And personnel.
Possibly, yeah.
Last time I heard, now we're popular, you can do it in there.
So, am I, you said they had three hundred and sixteen and they've added a hundred and fifty, is that what you said?
They, they have two hundred and sixteen.
Two hundred and sixteen.
Yeah.
So now they have three hundred and sixty-six.
Right. Yeah.
We're not begging to build a big enough jail, are we?
Hey, they'll say you built it, they'll come.
Yep. I say, we build it, they're already out there, we need to throw in there.
Yeah. I'm making a motion to endorse the contract with Howard, or Cass County.
Okay. In all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Yeah, will the pricing change after the one year or is this different contract? I should ask that.
Well, it, you can't change, you can't.
I look forward to go up to about forty-five dollars before you know it.
White County's still charging us the state rate of thirty-seven fifty.
Right. Are you still gonna build the usual White County after this?
Yes, yeah, actually, it's, uh, we're, we're, we have, I guess to bring you up to date on that, we have forty-five in our facility today, eleven in White. And we're actually, because of this, looking to move a few, uh, extras to Cass County this week.
Two weeks ago, you only had one out of county, and you was, that third is...
I know, I know, that's, had some, had some space freed up in these, these two counties, so. I mean, it's, it's good and bad, you know, I mean, it's good.
Well, if the services wasn't so nice, we wouldn't be getting all these people.
We, uh, it's good to have lower numbers in our facility, but again, that's, I guess it's not always balanced money going outside of our county.
So Cass County has three hundred and sixty-six, and we have thirty-four, is that right?
Forty-five.
No, I mean actual bed space we have.
Oh, thirty-four, yes, sir, yes.
I still say we build them outside.
They were in.
Yeah. They were in the, they were in the old days.
Yeah.
I've got two more items related to Saturdays, meaning one o'clock.
Okay.
Uh, on the, uh, jail, um, I received from, uh, Warren and Thornburg, uh, we need to publish a notice and, and have the committee this afternoon, the working group adopt a resolution. So I, I, I took those documents and, and have them edited and ready for your consideration. The first one is, is a notice of hearing, and there is a change in the telephone number only. Uh, need your approval to have a hearing, they have to have the committee make a proposal to the board commissioners, and, uh, the reason why they selected B W construction, and then that committee, uh, passes a resolution making a re, recommendation to the board and have a public hearing at your October the third meeting. So, this is the notice of that meeting, but I need your approval on it to have it at ten o'clock on the, uh, October the third.
Can we give that approval now?
The approval of the notice.
Oh, okay. Do I need a motion to adopt that?
Go ahead, Mark.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the notice of, to enter into a public-private V O T agreement.
Correct.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that will be during your regular meeting, uh, at ten o'clock, if you conduct, we'll give you the, what, what you need to do at that point. Okay, so the second document is a resolution at the last board's, uh, meeting, you approved the membership on a working jail, jail public working group, uh, in order to, uh, constitute them also as the V O T committee, or the extra gets a recommendation for this afternoon meeting, I prepared a resolution to, so they'll be wearing two hats, they'll be the V O T committee and, and the working group. So that's what this does, it's kind of a terminology thing so that there's, to clarify the fact that, that they are operating, uh, not just as the jail, uh, project, working group, but they're serving the official function, being the, uh, committee under the V O T process to make the recommendation.
They didn't put names.
This aft, so this afternoon, uh, that committee, of which you are all members, will be taking up a resolution, uh, recommending the bid of, of a proposal, uh, B W construction, B W construction. So this clarifies that, that the working group serves as the V O T committee. It's just a legal document to clarify that that's what they also serve as.
Do you need copies of this in the one before?
I believe Ted sent, 'cause I think he wants it in the newspaper this week.
I sent it to, this, the paper.
That motion to, to adopt resolution twenty, twenty-two oh eight?
Yep. Now, just two copies, please, sorry.
You make a motion. Okay, so I got a motion and a second to adopt resolution number two oh two-two, twenty-two dash oh eight, which is a resolution of the board commissioners of Carroll County, Indiana, identifying V O T committee for purposes of Indiana Code five dash twenty-three. Okay? All in favor of that, uh, adoption, that motion to adopt the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
I forgot what the date is, there ain't a night here.
And back to the waste management, there's, there's another signature on that, we already approved it, so.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Sign where it says customer signature?
Yes.
Does that need one signature?
I think so, isn't it?
Yeah.
Anything else there?
That's all I have.
Yeah, go ahead. Where do you go ahead?
I have one question.
And Debbie, there's a question.
Yes, excuse me.
That's okay, um, who, who is serving on the V O T committee?
Looks like all three of us, right?
Well, yeah, you guys.
Yeah, there were, I didn't have the list in the mid, I, I, it was whoever they mentioned in the member slash.
They didn't mention names. There were names, yeah. No, there wasn't many names, there were, um...
Sheriff.
The sheriff, and the count, uh, one council. And you, all three said you wanted to be there at the first meeting, but I...
Over the open meeting.
Who's gonna, who's gonna do the resolution, and, I... I'm just...
The council discussing at their meeting?
No. Oh, sorry. No, well, they did not.
Who was gonna be there?
I would assume we can ask Scott to be there today, but he just left.
He's coming there.
Yeah, I think he wanted to be there. Three commissioners, one council, um, B W, Elvatas, sheriff, and whoever that B W recommends, is what it's, so that, I assume that that's what they're going to talk about today.
Obviously, Clint's, you're gonna be there remaining, that's correct. So I talked to the one you said, you're gonna do a presentation, that you're moving or...
So that's what they said.
That, that's where, that's where, it's fuzzy, really, I mean, the committee is, is just the county folks.
We're, we're participants in sharing information because we're operational, but we're not, we're like ex officias, B W committee.
So, from, from the official standpoint of making the recommendation, it would be the public representatives only that would be doing the resolution. So it would be the three commissioners initially, unless they're, unless that changes, if you all were mentioned, and, and whoever the council, you know, since they didn't... If president would be the logic or want to do it, unless he's not, is an intended, in the sheriff. So it would be the three, five public officials that would be assigned in that resolution.
Well, that was the motion that was presented, was how they established the working group consisting of, and stating, which are those vehicles, and that's how they operated.
That's fine.
Other commissioner asked, the force, force and fire alarm system?
I have something on that, um, we can just forget that, um, Keith sent on information, um, Ted was supposed to investigate that.
We did that.
Credit.
It was taken care of. Thanks.
It was stapled until today, and, um, but Keith went ahead and pursued it with Forsons, and they said, well, uh, never mind, like, we're, we're good to go. So, we don't have to do the crap.
All right. Me either. Other business, does anybody out there have anything to bring up to us?
Protect the session next Monday.
We have a protective session next Monday, yes, and I wanted to report that, uh, I attended the, uh, redevelopment commission's meeting, and, uh, just so we both know, and anybody out there knows, that right now the grand total funds at their disposal of the redevelopment, those tenth district, five million one hundred and nine thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. And, uh, of course they have committed...
I do.
A portion of that, a pretty big portion, to, uh, the highway out here, the section between one hundred, one hundred north and the Hoosier Heartland, which is being done right now. Uh, I was wanting to ask Debbie, did he say forty-five days, they're gonna have that ready, did I? I heard he said something about forty-five, but I didn't quite catch what he said.
Yes, he did mention that number, yes, yes.
It seemed, looking at it today and thinking about when I saw it, was at this meeting, forty-five days seems a little short on when they're gonna have that whole thing done.
Well, I think that's what's in the contract, uh, and, you know, there've been delays, NIPSCO, you know, that kind of thing.
About three months all the way down to eighteen?
Till the, uh, fourteenth, fourteenth, all the way. No? I came in when this project was going.
Yeah, I didn't have that understanding, it's, it's just for the intersection, and, I mean, a little, little after the interse, uh, one hundred and four twenty-one.
Two, is it two, not the eighteenth, to, to the, to the Hoosier Heartland.
I believe so, yeah.
I think that's the fourteenth, so.
I think the expectation, I think the expectation is that Indot will do something there, but...
Yeah, that may be expected.
That's right. Maybe that was just around the dining room table, I don't know. Yeah.
They are coming on up through the Indot, yes, and of course it's a nightmare to get to the southern part of the county to Delphi right now, uh, which is part of my being late, 'cause I forgot, you can't come in on a principal road, so I had to double back. Besides that, it wasn't until your phone call, and I went to answer the phone driving along, you didn't hear that share, and...
But we have it on video, you know.
I, I, yeah, I realized that I couldn't read the phone, 'cause I hadn't brought my glasses with me, so I had to U-turn and go back and get my glasses.
There's another one, U-turn, get to get that.
I think I could be taking up one of those thirty-six shells, but...
That would be, look, Cass County, they're in jail.
Yeah, that'd be nice to be in to do it.
Yeah, probably write on the walls first.
I, I don't know if there's any more that I have to bring up about the redevelopment, but I did want you to know about it. I have not addressed, was there anything about the, uh, oh, there is, about the, uh, potential of a ambulance garage in that area? Because it seems like there's so many things we got going right now, I just don't set up that. They were approached by, uh, Jake and the, uh, Economic Development Corporation concerning the building of a new building, of their spec building. And, uh, there, there is apparently interest on the part of the, uh, uh, economic development to end their, in their, in their industrial park out here, have a roughly fifty thousand square foot spec building sitting there. No floor, but the size of it, they said it's not practical, put the floor again, 'cause you don't know the, how heavy of the floor you need for what's coming in. But they expressed that, uh, there aren't any buildings available in this area for somebody coming in. Something that kind of concerned me is that, they said most of the demand for these buildings are going to be from foreign companies, like German or Japanese particularly. Which I was gonna, sitting there prepared to throw a fit, if they said Chinese, but they didn't, so, uh, they let it go, it was German and, uh, and, uh, Japanese. But, uh, there, apparently, like when you go down the interstate, we hit Lebanon area, those, about all of them that built a spec buildings and then we stopped. And I, I can, I didn't add this to the meeting, but I can attest to the fact that, if I spent eleven years as economic development director, even back then, which is getting to be a significant number of years ago, everybody wanted to see a building. The, taking them out and showing them a piece of land wasn't what they wanted. Now, we are light years ahead of where I was at that time, Jake is in a much better position, because he's got an industrial park, who, I didn't, I was taking them out, showing them farm ground, and he's got water, sewage, electric, you know, utilities all on site, plus he's talking about an industrial building here. I don't know, Tim, you advised me, we don't really have a, a say, do we, on whether the redevelopment decides to invest in that building or not? I didn't think so, uh, so, it will, we just, you'll represent your opinions and your opinions, which I will take to that board, and, uh, express of if we want to make that record, make that investment. And so, that's, the purpose of these explaining is, is I want you to all that over in your minds. Question?
Yeah, this quick follow-up question, was there any further discussion at that meeting, Bill, as it relates to the jail utilities?
I didn't hear a word about the jail facilities.
Okay.
Did you have a request to put forward?
No, it's just, I think it's been on the agenda for some time now, and I didn't know.
See if they're gonna run it or split the cost with us?
Right.
Oh, of the, of the sewer down through here?
Yes.
They're, they're, they're gonna do it.
Are they?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I was saying if they weren't, maybe we can see if they have some land and put the jail in the industrial park.
I always wondered about that, but they wanted a lot of money for that land, yeah, yes.
I thought you might want to mention the cost of that shell building, and who they expect to pay for it.
Right, the cost is, the cost, I'm trying to write it down here, help me if I...
Five mil.
Five million.
Five to six million, I think, yeah.
Yes, that's exactly right, they said five to six million for a fifty thousand square foot building, which seems like a boatload of money for a five, for fifty thousand dollar... I mean, I can only relate to it to my stuff, you know, and I know Ethan has just got a thirty thousand square foot building, which is a huge bar. Thirty thousand square foot building down in West Lafayette, if it did anything like that, it'd cost no waste here, so, um... And they were asking for half or two and a half of them, isn't that right, from the...
They want, they want the redevelopment commission to pay for it.
To pay for it, but what, half of it, they wanted down or something like that on it?
I, I don't recall that.
Okay.
Uh, I recall that they requested the...